Counsel, we're just waiting for Andrew to get the TV recording.
If we could go ahead and call our meeting caller, please. If we could start by asking everybody to rise for a moment of silence and then ask for the president to go ahead and pledge his word. Let's pledge.
The flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Bradley?
Here.
Mr. Butcher, Mrs. Butcher Cromway?
Here.
Mrs. Singer Erdley?
Here.
Mr. Lesby?
Here.
Mr. Showalter? Mrs. Tingle Sains?
Here.
Mrs. Packett?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Thank you. We have a form and knew ahead of time that Mr. Showalter was going to be tired of the family he has tonight. Each of you should have a copy of the minutes from our last regularly scheduled meeting. If you'd like to take a moment, write those over for any possible corrections or issues.
Well, they are because Karen wasn't here last time.
Yeah, and it's got me is being here and making a motion.
Is this all wrong?
Anybody have a problem with that?
I make a motion that we approve them at the next meeting.
As they are submitted currently.
As they are submitted currently.
I'll second that, Paul.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Sorry.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Karen, it's Karen's spirit.
That's right.
She was.
In your package, you should have a copy of the last check register received. You could indicate you received that register. Thank you. Under public comments portion of the agenda, first on the list is Ms. Amy Harrington. Please.
Hi. Thank you for letting me talk with you all this evening. My husband and I live at 312 South Hamilton on the corner of Jackson and Hamilton. Our house was built in about 1903, we believe, and we've worked very hard since we bought the house about three years ago to maintain it and return it to the natural integrity of the neighborhood. Two years ago, we elected to put in a driveway as what was present were two concrete paths that you saw that cars would drive on. There was a profound amount of erosion at that point in time, and the sidewalk, if you all know the area, lots of people walk. The sidewalk was dangerous because of the gravel that eroded, as well as it was a large dip. So we talked with several people. I don't know if you all know this, but there's a lot of growth going on in Georgetown. And you, and to get a driveway poured is kind of difficult because there are many larger jobs. So we were on a waiting list for about nine months in order to get the driveway poured. At that point in time, we knew that we were going to need to do some excavation because the driveway should be between four and six inches thick. Ours is five and a half. We measured it most recently. So we dug down about eight inches, but each house on either side of the driveway, it's a shared driveway, is a hundred years old, and they have clay pipes that come from the cellar in order to promote the drainage. So you can only excavate so far, plus have a driveway that you can use, as well as a walking path for everybody that comes through. Our contractor, Carlos, told me he was contacting the city because we had to have a permit to shut down the sidewalk. I said, okay, and made sure I called to have the lines marked and we moved from there. The sidewalk, the driveway was poured two years ago, consistent with the driveways of the neighborhood. In fact, the driveway two doors down has an apron that mirrors ours. On Friday, January 19th, I received a notice of violation from the code enforcement office. I called and asked what that violation was for, and they said, we don't know. The city engineer called and told us to send it out, and we did. We received notification from the city engineer's office on January 2nd. It's important to note that on January 2nd, the temperature was between negative nine and 13 degrees. When I spoke with the city engineer's office, he indicated that he'd done a sidewalk survey on December 29th when it was 23 degrees outside of the southern area of downtown Georgetown to look at the sidewalks. And at that point in time, he felt that I was, our home was in violation because our apron went out onto the street. And I said, well, what do I do now? You know, because what you get is this letter, I don't know if any of you all have seen it, that says you have five days to fix it, but not a start, when's the five days start, or when the five days end, or I can't pour concrete in the winter. And so I said, well, can I ask for a waiver? Nope. Can I, how am I supposed to fix this? Well, you can't. You can't pour concrete. So what happens? Well, you're going to get a citation. Well, who wants to get a citation? And the appeal process for a citation is you have to come down to the city clerk and you file an appeal, and then you heard before a hearing officer, and then you go before the hearing officer. I work. Who can take off work to fix a problem that I couldn't fix during the winter anyway? So, so I can't fix it during the five days. Additionally, as a result of this, I began to look at the code that was cited on my notice of violation, and it no longer exists. The code numbers have been changed, so I've been cited for something that no longer exists. And then I did a neighborhood assessment, and there are six houses between College and Clayton that have driveways exactly like mine, and the city has poured Farmington Drive, I have a picture of that, with the same apron as my driveway. So at this point, I come to the council and say, you know, I'm a citizen of Georgetown, graduated from here. How are any of us supposed to fix something when you're walking around in the winter, doing assessments, and you can't pour concrete? If I could pour concrete, I promise you that between Friday, when I got the notice, and my time up on Sunday, there's no way I could find a contractor to do that. So why do I have to be cited when I can only lose? Because a citation is associated with a record, and that record is associated with a patterning of behavior. So if I do it again, I get a fine or a higher fine, and, and nobody wants their name in the paper for that kind of stuff. I've been told it's not a criminal act, but I really don't care. I'm really trying to do what I'm supposed to do. The other component of this is why am I cited for a code that doesn't exist? And my neighbors that had driveways like mine, I went to their houses and they didn't get a citation or a notice of violation. So if we're looking at everything, then why didn't they? And, and one of those, and I, I'm sorry, Charlie Perkins, is Charlie Perkins, and he lives two doors down, and the city painted his apron yellow. So I'm thinking there's an opportunity for improvement as well as adjustment. I asked for a waiver, I asked for negotiation, I asked for an, you know, discussion, and what I was told was it needs to be off the road, or they would come in and bust it up themselves and I could clean up that mess. That's not the way we treat people from Georgetown either. It's a nine-inch drop-off, so if you bust it up, I can't get out. Furthermore, my driveway's a shared driveway with my next door neighbor, and they didn't get the notice. Just us.
Do you have a picture of what we're talking, what you're talking about?
Sure, sure.
Pass around?
312 South.
312 South Hamilton. December 29th is when they made the walking rounds. January 2nd is when they notified the office. January 11th is when it looks like they did the walk around, and then, and the other thing I asked the city attorney is, why do we do it at this point in time? And it's something about the statute says as soon as you find a problem, you got to notify the consumer, the resident, to fix it. But December 29th is when the city engineer noted that this was an issue, but I didn't get notified until January 19th. So if it, if there's an urgency in it, it took almost 30 days to notify me, and I got five days over a weekend, and my clock starts the day after the notice. So it's, they told me that my clock started, it was issued on the 16th, so I guess the day, it starts on the 17th, 17th, 18th, 19th, 20th, 21st. I didn't get it till the 19th. So what we did was, my neighbors probably don't appreciate that, I do have pictures of all their houses. We measured everybody's apron. So if you all want those pictures as well.
Yeah, please.
Sure. Some of them are duplicate.
Thank you.
So Andrew, do you have a comment for, it sounds like she's talked with you.
Absolutely.
Yeah, there's, there's the other half of this that we should discuss.
Yeah, I, I don't want to get into, into a full argument. I do want to say generally I, I take issue with almost everything that you've said. There's a lot of information left out there. This, our, our city engineer's office believes this is a significant issue, and I, I have to agree. And as, you know, we, we probably spoke between myself and several other folks in our office, we probably spoke about three hours with you, tried to help you, you know, understand what the issue is and why, and why you got the notice in December.
Uh, sir, I got it.
This is January, sorry, why we are out inspecting sidewalks when it's cold. But as I stated, you get an NOB, and it has a five day for you to respond essentially. But as I, as I further stated, when you receive your citation, it will not, you won't, the period for you, knowing that it is January, the period for you to remedy this would be two months. And it will also clearly indicate that if you get to that two months and you still haven't been able to fix it, you will be given an extension. But it doesn't, it doesn't make the problem not a problem. And as to the issue of the, the number of the citation itself or the number of the code section, I actually just emailed you right before we came in here. That code has existed since 2006. It was 302.2.10. When we did our amendment in 2016, we dropped the two up, 302.10. And when we issued you the citation, we accidentally left the two in there. So we're happy to reissue the NOB to you with the correct citation and give you an additional five days, but I don't really see that as much of a relevant issue. This particular driveway apron, I admittedly, I have not seen any of the others. I'm willing to look at them all, but this one is particularly egregious. It sticks out into the road, that looks about a foot and a half, and it, you know, it's probably a good two or three inches, and it causes issues with road safety and particular with stormwater. You, you can see how the leaves have bunched and gathered up there because the water can't run along the road like it is supposed to. If there are other issues, we will commit to looking at those and addressing them in the exact same fashion. Sometimes we run across these issues, and sometimes we get calls on them, and those are the only ones that we get to. But if you have evidence of other issues, we will, we will go and take a look at all of them. We are trying, the, the reason we're out looking at sidewalks in December is for the rest of the year, we're often so busy with other things that we have to take the month where we have downtime or slow time and go do the other things that we have to do. And by ordinance, the city engineer is directed to do a full inventory of all sidewalks in the city. So he was out on one of those routine inspections when he saw the driveway apron. So he took a picture of it, he sent it to code enforcement, and code enforcement gets to it when they can get to it as well. I understand your concerns, and I, I, we want to work with you, but it does not make the issue, it doesn't delegitimize the issue that you received it in January when it's cold. We will work with you to make it right, but we can't allow that ramp to stand that way. It causes a significant issue for, for traffic safety and, and other things. And my point was, come and see us and we'll work with you, but if you don't believe it's a violation, you have an avenue of appeal.
So the reason I'm here tonight is because I asked for a face-to-face meeting with you and the mayor and the engineer and code enforcement, because each person I talked to, I heard a different story. So, so to say that, come talk to us, that's not exactly true. The other thing is, is that I appreciate that you showed the picture of the leaves bunched up. However, you didn't show the picture, and I, and I didn't know we were going to be talking leaves, because there's leaves all down Hamilton Street, whether there's a driveway or not. And I, and to the driveways that are there that didn't receive citations, there's a storm drain on either side. So if there was a concern about the flow of water, you would think it would be most concerning on either side where there's a storm drain. And those driveways are over 30 years old. So if this is an annual assessment that's occurring, we've missed it for 30 years, and you've missed mine for two. And to, and to two doors up to have the exact same driveway, and you paint it yellow, to me, that doesn't make sense. I appreciate that you, you did share with me that when, when you send me my citation, you'll tell me, but you, you didn't offer that until I called about several times. I'll be very frank, several times. It wasn't until I called several times that you said, don't worry about it. Your citation will say three months. But how you get to that appeal is you have to file something with the city clerk's office in order to contest that you got the citation. So you have to take time off work to come down to that, and then if you can't get it done, then you got to come back and do it again and do it again. There, nobody can do it in January. Nobody can do it in February. So, so why do we do this to start out with? Why do we set people up for failure?
But I, respectfully, I did ask you on the phone, if you received the citation in June, would you still disagree with the, the content of the citation? Your answer was?
Absolutely. There's six houses on my street that have the exact same driveways. It's been there two years. Theirs have been there 35. Who wouldn't contest it? And, and the other piece is, I asked specifically, what's, what solution? I asked for solutions. How do we grade this so I protect the drainage system of these 100-year-old houses, prevent erosion, keep it from going back where the foundation of the houses are exposed? The engineer said it's not his problem, and Devin told me from your office that you all had a list of contractors that you could give me. Now, I don't know how the city has a list of contractors or how you get on that list, but I'm, I don't know how that works either. But, but we've already had a contractor look at it, and you, we would have to go back many inches, inch of the driveway, and, and it would leave the sidewalk at about an 80-degree angle for anybody that wants to walk or use a wheelchair or a stroller. That poses an opportunity as well. The other thing I'd like to bring up is this is a parking side of the street. These are all parking spots. My family parks in this area. So we're talking about impeding the flow of traffic at the end of my driveway through parking spaces. I think that makes a difference. I recognize the water flow, and I would be really very interested and willing to talk with someone about how to set up appropriate flow. But I was never given that option. And I think that one of the, the concerns that I have is it's not until you get the citation and you have to come down and do all these steps, and it's, and it's on the record and in the paper, that does anybody say you have any rights? You can't ask for a waiver, you can't talk to anybody, you can't offer solutions, you can't problem solve until you get a citation. Now, who wants that?
I will say, I will say one thing. I don't know whether your, your problem is a violation or not, okay? But I will say one thing, for, for the conversation you're having here, I did not vote in, for this new form of code enforcement violations we have because you are a prime example of it is too cumbersome on the person that's violating. You're always, there's always people in this community that are violating things intentionally, and they come over and over and over and over. So part of that was, you know, we can maybe correct their behavior by making this so tight, but what it does is for folks like you, that you just did what you were trying to do to improve your property and make it easier for you to live where you live, and now you've been caught up into it, and the fact that you now have to go through all these hoops and all these things just to get a problem fixed is wrong for code enforcement, for the code enforcement ordinance. So I didn't vote for it because I thought it was just what, you are the first person that's come in here to start talking about it. It's way too cumbersome on a person that honestly says, okay, I got a problem. I may not think it's, I may not think it's a problem, but you're saying it is, so let's figure it out. But the process has already passed you by, I think, for what the legal process is. Of course, you've come in front of us and notified us about it, but the process, I think, has already passed you by because it's not time enough for anybody to get something together to try to fix if you legitimately want to fix the problem to fix it, but.
And we're the youngest people in our neighborhood. My husband and I, and we aren't young chicks. So we're talking about driveways and, and homes of people that are much older, that, that now have to figure out transportation and who to talk to, and it's.
Actually, Karen, the process has not passed anyone.
Has she not gone her base to get to the clerk and do what she needs to do at the clerk's office?
She has been in communication with Andrew and others at City Hall. The appeals process that, we knew when we set up this code enforcement mechanism that it was no longer just a city of Georgetown code enforcement initiative, that it's countywide, and there's four governmental jurisdictions that make up the code enforcement efforts. We knew that, that each of those four governmental agencies would follow this same administrative and appeals process that is still available to Ms. Harrington. We also knew that when we voted on that format, that those hearings are not held at the city council law. There's little we can do for Mrs. Harrington tonight, except unless the council wants to vote to withdraw from the entire code ordinance format. There is an appeals process. It's fair, it's equitable, it applies to everyone, and it applies to Ms. Harrington.
I would like to.
There's a process in place that, that should be allowed to unfold before we start attacking the process.
And I'd like to, I'd like to add further to that, that as a practice, one, we, we always, we, we, we try our best to reach out when we see that there's an issue that might just need a phone call. And, and sometimes it happens, sometimes it doesn't. But when you receive, if you receive an NOB in the mail and you call and say, hey, I'd like to talk about this, and, and understandably, you, you had a rough encounter and I apologize for that. We, we've apologized, several others have for that. But we try to say, let us work with you to come up with a resolution of this. But if what you say is, I disagree that there's a problem, we are, we are bound by our own ordinance to say, okay, your opportunity to make that argument is for our appeals court. If instead what you say is, look, I really want to do this, I have concerns about how we can do it, and I have concerns about the time in which I have to do it, we, we work. We will work with you. We will say, all right, let's talk about how we can help you design it to minimize your impact, how we can make the slopes work and, and give you the adequate time to do it. That, that's the process that we try to follow. But if, again, your response is, I disagree with you, you're wrong, we, what choice do we have but to follow our own ordinance?
And, and I appreciate your response, and, and thank you for following up. The reality is, is that I offered that to the engineer who said it wasn't his problem. I said, how am I going to grade this? What am I going to do? So by the time I spoke with you, Mr. Hartley, he'd already told me, cut it off the curb, and it's a nine-inch drop. I expressed to you my concern about leveling the sidewalk and making sure it was a safe path to walk, and you said, all I can tell you is, it's got to come out of there. So I, I, so I did do that negotiation piece. But the, the biggest concern that I have is that five days, you talk about an appeal process, you talk about your listening, you're talking about that you're working together, then don't send me a notice of violation. Just send me a citation because there's nothing I can do with a notice of violation because you all won't work, act, listen, allow appointments to be scheduled, hear anything until I receive the citation. And I was trying to avoid a citation and get it fixed ahead of time. And so that was never an option. And so it seems that the system is, you got a notice, you're going to get cited, and then we'll play ball, and then we'll talk about time. And who wants that? Who wants a notice of citation? Who wants to say, Amy Harrington, yeah, she's got problems with her neighbors? Who wants that?
And I, I apologize for the conversation that you've had here internally, but I am, I am offering to you now that we are willing to work with you at any stage of the process. The point about the citation was you, you had indicated to us, I want to appeal this. And I, and our indication was to you, you can't appeal, and it'll be, it's written into the ordinance that way. You can appeal a citation. It's written into the state law that way. But that's not the same thing as saying, we won't work, we're not willing to work with you. We're willing to work with you if the, if the question is, how do I do this? If the question is whether or not you have to do it, then we have to go through our process.
Okay.
Mr. Harrington, Detective, the five-day notice of violation period, when we originally presented the ordinance to the council based on the way that state law was written, we only had a seven-day citation in the ordinance. And the council's fear was that if a person didn't respond within the seven days, you lose all of people's rights, even to appeal to the court or the appeals court. So the council felt very strongly that a homeowner like you needed more time than seven-day citation. So the council asked that we put a five-day notice of violation period in front of the citation to assist homeowners like you with more time in the process.
Well, it doesn't come across that way. It comes across to citizens as a threat.
I, I want to say something. I, I know, I've known Amy for a long time, and I know her mom. Her mom's one of the sweetest people in Georgetown, as is her father. And, and she's just a real-life example of sometimes the problems that you do get into, when you read something, it might seem one way, but, and when it, when it comes to actual implementation or practice, it, it, the reality is that sometimes it's a little bit different. And I don't, I'm not, I don't want anybody to think I'm attacking this ordinance, and I really don't feel like Karen is either, but I think this is kind of a good opportunity for us to maybe take another look at this, this ordinance as, as we're working through this issue. They, they've obviously made a lot of improvements to their home. They were trying to improve their driveway. I have to agree that it encroaches into the street, and I can see that that's a problem. I'm kind of surprised the contractor didn't say, hey, we've got an issue here. We need to bring somebody from the city down and let's try to get this resolved, you know, before the, before it was poured. You know, hindsight's 20-20. That didn't happen, and here we are. So Andrew, and I'm, and I'm sure our city engineer, and obviously the mayor's willing to, to work through this and, and try to resolve it. Along these same lines, I'm gonna, I'm gonna share a real quick story, and I'm not, I'm not gonna belabor this, but right before we got the big snow, I bought a horrible house down here on Washington Street, and I got a notice of violation right before the snow hit. I got the notice, and it was, you know, I thought my five days was almost up by the time it came in the mail. I got the notice, and it was, you know, I thought my five days was almost up by the time it came in the mail. And then the snow hit, and we had three or four inches of snow over the top of all this trash that was in the yard. That needed to be picked up, along with the tires that the previous owner had left. But I got that notice.
I want to address that. This, that's something that's really important to me. Because we have had, as recently as within two weeks. We have had conversations with code enforcement and police departments. Because that's sort of their direct line about discretion.
Yeah.
And about when discretion is needed. And generally, you start with the assumption that everybody deserves discretion. Everybody deserves a, maybe they just didn't know, or let's help, let's operate from the standpoint of what do we want? And what we want is compliance, not citation.
Right, that's right.
So, I am encouraging them, we are encouraging them to start with that.
When did you encourage them to do that? My company, I called, you know, and I'm like, please, understand, I'm going to get attention care. I'm going to take the worst house on the street, I'm going to make it one of the nicest, I promise. But I've inherited a bad problem, and it's not one that I created.
And I know that our code enforcement officers attempt, whenever it's reasonable, when they see an issue like that, first go and knock on the door. They say, hey, can we chat about this? And sometimes they'll chat about it, and the homeowner will go, hey, I understand that's a problem, I'll have that fixed tomorrow. They'll walk away, and they won't see him again.
That's a great approach.
Sometimes that's not an option. And you can't always go and, they're going to go back to the office, and they're going to pull it up, and they're going to find the phone number, and they're going to call, and they're going to leave them. I mean, there is a limit.
And I said, hey, you just call me if you've ever got a problem, and I'll take care of it. Well, I can't do that, I've got, you know, I've got this procedure that I've got to follow.
Well, and you're right, and I get that. And they have a concern about treating everyone fairly. And the point is that everybody can be treated fairly. But, you know, there is a process in place. And it is the process you're supposed to follow. And I understand that the NOB is an intimidating thing. We talked about a myriad of different ways to soften that, by following a courtesy NOB or what have you. But we, we're just, we're trying to strike a balance between following our process. And respecting homeowners who want to do the right thing.
And Amy wants to do the right thing, I'm sure. And I certainly do as well. I look at these as opportunities to be constructive, not necessarily critical, I want to be constructive, and let's make things better. And what you're saying, if they can address issues without having to become very formal. I'm sure that saves everybody a lot of time and frustration. It'll save you and the mayor that same thing.
Especially, David, when the conversation centers on an agreed issue.
Right.
If the homeowner says, there is no problem, and there is nothing for me to fix, like this case. And our folks are saying there is something that must be fixed. Then it's a little hard. You may not work that out without a citation and an appeals process.
Absolutely.
If there's a meeting on the mind about, yes, I need to clean this up, and I need to do this. That's one scenario where the homeowner 100% disagrees with what we're suggesting be done. There's a process for that. And I'm just suggesting that we've established that process. And there's little, there's little alternative but to follow that process.
And I appreciate that, Mayor. Unfortunately, that's an incorrect summary of the discussion. By the time I spoke with Mr. Hartley, I'd spoken with several people along the way that said it wasn't their problem, it was my problem. And when I talked about grading of the yard, and how far could I go back, and how do I protect the integrity of the foundation of my home. I was told, it's not my problem. So, by the time I get to Mr. Hartley, I'm pretty exasperated. I got five days to fix it, I can't pour concrete, don't know when the five days started. Nobody can fix this problem, because somebody did walking rounds in the middle of December, when you can't pour concrete. And I've asked for assistance, and I've been told that there's a list of contractors that the city has, that they can give me some names. I know it took me nine months to get where I'm at.
Well, whether we have a list or not, that you don't think sidewalks should be inspected during the winter? Is that what you're saying?
I'm thinking that if you're inspecting a sidewalk, and you expect someone to fix the issue. Then you do it during a period of time when they can do it. Why would we not want our citizens to be successful? Nobody can pour concrete when it's 13 degrees outside.
Yes, ma'am, and we actually understand that. We really do understand that. And we would have anticipated that sidewalk and concrete repairs be done during warm weather. But we will inspect them when we have downtime and we don't have employees named other things. It's just a manpower thing, it's just manpower.
Yeah, if I could just add in, I know the area, you know, I'm walking in it and everything. And I think it is, and I can understand where you're coming from, because when you get that kind of notice, it's jarring. When you get any notice from the government, whether it's taxes or anything, so I can understand that. And like Karen, I didn't vote for it, and kind of what David's saying, you know, I can, I can understand your feelings. And I think a lot of it is miscommunication, and kind of like the mayor said, you know, this is the downtime, you know, for people. But I don't think anyone expects you, you know, in 13-degree weather. And it's daunting, you know, and I love what you all have done with the property. I've walked by there, and I know people that used to live in the house, so I know it's quite a, quite a big job, what you're attempting, you know.
Well, I think at this point, my request would be, since the citation or the notice of order was not appropriately cited. The violation was not appropriately cited because the code is wrong, it's not consistent with the law. So, you need to, if you're going to cite me or issue me an order of violation, it needs to be sent out with the appropriate code on it. And I have ascertained that that is correct. The other thing that I'd like to bring to the council is, then everyone on Hamilton Street needs to have their aprons removed. Because everyone is in violation, and I shouldn't be the only one that receives a citation. Despite the fact that some of them are 30 years old, and the city of Georgetown has painted those yellow. I measured the height, as well as the distance from the sidewalk. And so, everybody's in violation, even the street that the city poured on Farmington. And so, I guess I will wait my, to receive my new order of violation, and then I can't fix it. Because, you know, nobody can pour concrete or bring the jackhammer in to tear out the driveway at this point. And then we'll just know moving forward that, I don't know what to say. Because there isn't anybody to talk to, you can't negotiate.
We're happy to sit down with you and work out a plan on how you would pour that driveway to meet all of those concerns. To meet our concerns and your concerns.
Okay.
And I don't think we're expecting to get it done next week.
No. Well, then maybe, then maybe that needs to be on the order of violation, instead of on the citation. Ms. Harrington, we've noticed a violation, and we recognize that it's 13 degrees outside, and there's absolutely no way you can fix this. So, we're going to give you till June, May, March. So, you don't have to spend all day trying to figure it out, until someone says, but, but we've talked about this, we're going to give you to March. Because I didn't find that out till 1:00, and I began calling at 8:30. So, that would be the recommendation I have taken forward. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the sign-in sheet, this is Mark Pennington.
I'm just passing these out, and showing pass it around. I'm Mark Pennington, and I'm just passing around some pictures of the area on West Main that I'm talking about. Which it's down by a property that we have at 802 West Main. And, um... And so, we've had the property probably three or four or five years. And the people walking up and down through there, it's eroding, like the road is eroding some there. But whether there's snow, or there's water, or the grass is high, or whatever there. Like, people will be walking on the white line, and half of their shoulders out in the, you know, half of their body's out in the road. And it's dark, and I don't know what to do, and a car's coming. And it's just, for four years I've been doing this, and it's like, I don't, I didn't know what to do. And so, I had, um- I had an architect I know, he drew up one of these pictures, like a before-and-after kind of thing. That, you know, the people that walk through my yard and come on up through there. I don't care if they walk through my yard or nothing, that doesn't bother me, but there's so many of them that... I know, I think one lady's been killed there, and I know one guy in a wheelchair was knocked up on the bank there. And I've actually helped pull people out of some wrecks right in there. Not to say that might not have been from people walking. But my concern is just the people walking up there, and I don't know what to do, and, um... Like, my property's on the right side of the, of the, um, the one that's got the red lines on it. And then, um, two of them there show the properties down through there, and kind of how they... You know, and I wouldn't have any idea on the utilities. You know, there's probably a couple hundred thousand dollars' worth of concrete that would need to be poured, footings or walls or whatever in that area. But, um, I guess the reason I'm just here is, is because I don't want to hit somebody in the middle of the night. And then I, you know, that'll be, you know, nobody wants that. And I just, I don't know if, there's some other dangerous places, I grew up here. I know this town, you know, like a lot of you all. But in Indian Hills, we could ride our bikes down through there, and we don't need a sidewalk there, you know, it's, it's just a good... But a place like that-
State highway, that's different.
Mm-hmm, well, like the state highway, there's a road in kind of at Kentucky to, in between there. And it's hard enough to go up that hill, but I just want it to be safe there in front of my place. And I didn't know if you all looked at it or what, and I thought, well, hey, Baron, can you draw this up for me? And just gives you an idea anyway of what we can do.
Mayor, you want to tell them what we've got trying to go on up that road?
Yeah. Well, I'll definitely say, Mark, that this stretch of West Main Street that you're expressing your concern about. Has been discussed in, with this council, this exact council that's here tonight. Probably more than any other street or any other issue that's said we have talked about this.
I know there's some other places, like there in front of Southern States, there's several places, yes, sir.
This one, we are acutely aware of. And we've got, we've got council members that have talked themselves blue in the place, trying to get things done here. Ms. Conway's done that, and I think probably in others, other areas of town. Mr. Showalter, who's not here tonight, has brought lighting concerns and streetlight concerns.
Yeah.
We'll address some streetlight issues later. We're trying to bring information to the council about areas we can make safer. We did successfully apply for a grant to try to get both better lighting and sidewalks from... Literally, from all the way downtown to the top of the hill. We got funded for the first of three phases of that grant. And that grant's intention is to eventually get sidewalks, much, much in the manner you've had the armpit drawn. And others have brought similar drawings to us about the way it could be done. It's apparently a matter of money, Mark. It's just money. It's the excavation and building back the retaining wall, and some of the engineering is fairly extreme. We hope that the grant we got would impact this area more quickly. But phase one of the grant is actually going to start with improvements closer to downtown. And get the design work done for the whole project. If we get the design paid for in phase one of the project, we're in better shape to consider phases, to get funded for phases two and three. But you've brought an issue and diagrams that this council is very familiar with, and I'm sure are happy to speak to you.
May I say something?
Certainly.
Please. I'm ecstatic that you have come here tonight with your concerns, and your expertise, and your architect, and the drawings. Because we all need to see, it's better when you can see it on paper. You know, I see it every day. You're down there working, I'm coming home, I have a farm out on Stampin' Ground Road. I see people on bicycles in the dark, I see people walking with their groceries in the middle of the street, coming from Save-A-Lot. I see mothers pushing strollers. And it's really terrifying. And I'm, I'm just frustrated that it's taken this long. But Tom wants Paulie and I to go to Frankfurt, to the Transportation Cabinet, and try to talk about, as Tom said, some more money. I wish it could start up the hill, where there's no sidewalk, between Montgomery and Elizabeth Street, instead of on Water Street. But I guess this is the way it has to be, but I want to thank you so very much. And you are so good at what you do and your expertise, and because you care. I hope that you can be one of the ones, when he talks about the diagram that has to be, or the phase one that includes the money that we got. To come up with a plan. I hope yours can be part of the plan. How does he go about doing that, Mayor? When we have the dates that the options will be considered for the different drawings or design? I guess it's the right word.
Yeah, I'm honestly not sure I'd answer your question.
We have, we don't physically get the money in a bank account, is that correct? But we have been notified that we have qualified for the grant.
Right now, we've got, we've got our RFQ drafted. It is being reviewed by the Transportation Cabinet. They're sitting on it a little bit longer than we want. But once they approve that, we issue the RFQ. The RFQ is for design of phase one, design of phase one. And then we will do a bid for implementation. Most, most of phase one is designed, there's a little bit of implementation. And then, once we get that, that's when we have the plan to go back to the state and say, we have a fully fleshed-out plan, fully designed. It's shovel-ready, it's already partly started, now fund the rest of it.
But you can only put the design for phase one? Or do we get the design for one, two, and three?
Phase one is designed for everything, correct?
Okay.
Designed for all three phases.
Okay.
Implementation for part of phase one.
Okay.
But for sure, I'm going to clear that out. There's no doubt that we could make Mark's diagrams available to those engineers.
Good.
And if that was helpful for them, then that'd be a great way to get started. So, this is an active project for us.
Well, you know, growing up here, I just, I'm like, I don't know what to do, but come up here and just maybe think something ahead of time. And I understand about, it's the money. And so, where does the whole phase go to, like down to the bridge, or?
Starts with the viaduct.
Oh.
And part of, part of the, the entire project goes to the top of the hill. And the concern was a number of things along West Main Street, Mark. It is the lack of sidewalks in some areas. But it's also the fact that when we start looking at West Main Street carefully. You notice from the time you crest the hill, and get all the way down to Water Street, there's not one storm shelter outlet on West Main Street, none. Every bit of the water that kind of cascades down that incredibly long hill goes to the viaduct. And then pours through the openings of the viaduct. And the long-term effect on the viaduct has been devastating. So, step one is to stabilize the oldest masonry structure in Scotttown, and it's that viaduct. As a part of that same work, we've got some real dangerous circumstances if you walk- we've got some real dangerous circumstances if you walk across the biaduct, Mark, particularly on the side closest to the Arts and Cultural Center. The roadway is, is level with the sidewalk. So you're at great risk if you're on the sidewalk and just somebody could drift that easily. So, we hope one of the outcomes of this planning stage is to actually, uh, the engineers have suggested initially that we actually put a, uh, a new sidewalk on that far side or on the right side of the bridge going out of town. Uh, that will be wider, have the right elevation above the roadway and actually give us a scenic overlook for that side of the biaduct. Include the drainage features on the biaduct. And then plan some storm sewer improvements along the way to get some of that water off there. We can't design a project that requires engineering and not take care of stormwater.
Well, yes.
So, that's why, I know it frustrates council to not go start building the sidewalks that we want right now. But we've gotta design it and engineer it so it stays there a long time. And we're, we're at the beginning of this grant process where we've got a legitimate shot of doing this.
I think I could just add something too, 'cause I, you know, I live in the area, I live on Kelly and, you know, see everybody walking in the street from my window. And I had no idea that there was no drainage along there, because it's such an old area, you know, I had no idea. And then with Galvins moving to where they have, so many people are parking on the biaduct now. So with the, you know, the drainage and the water going through there and all the traffic and people parking there, I, I was a shock to find that out, so, so yeah, but thank you for, for coming and, and doing all the background work you did.
Okay, alright.
And given your, just, we'd be glad to, uh, have the same votes and council gets to look at plans.
Come back and see us.
Yeah, please.
We'd be glad they could come back and look at them.
So like the, that, so you, you just looked up to the top of the hill and not down on?
We're going all the way, all the way to Simba.
All the way up.
Since Simba Pass that could provide.
Supposed to be Elizabeth Street.
Elizabeth Street, that's, that's Elizabeth, Simba.
Elizabeth Street, oh, okay. Oh, so up and over there.
Yeah, all the way to that one section. We're hoping to take the sidewalk before we can circle it back in so they don't have to uphill, they can walk around, pump it up straight.
It's a three-phase plan.
Yeah, okay. Alright, well, thank you very much.
We're further than we were.
Yeah, we are, we are.
Appreciate your work on this, Mark.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Uh, next on the public signing sheet. Mr. Stevens, all of your documents are here.
Great.
You go ahead. It's, it's all of your, you know, the, and all the stuff that I'm sure you're keeping to your files. Also on the public signing sheet is, uh, Mr. Stephen Price.
Evening, uh, Steve Price, I live 167 Rucker Avenue in Georgetown. I wanted to ask, uh, you Mayor Fraser, you Attorney Hartley, and you, uh, Councilwoman, um, Hartley, uh, for your, uh, comments on the letter I brought to you regarding the, the, um, joint problems. Pop, a problem could be, that, 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 that suggests mutual, uh, interest between the mobile estate trailer park on Wild Road and the landfill on, uh, Double Cover Road. Do you recall the letter?
Absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely.
What, what do you think?
Is this the, uh, uh, dry method of handling humid excreta? It's probably something we're not gonna endorse, Steve.
So, you, you would just then continue to ship sewage sludge to the landfill?
If, if, if it is a choice between sewage sludge to the landfill or every homeowner burying their sewage, I'll definitely send it to a sanitary service system and send the sludge to the landfill.
Well, it, it's not, it's, there, there are other options than burial. Uh, burial would be, uh, 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 an immediate solution to the problem at the trailer park. And, but there are, there's more sophisticated, above-ground methods. And, and I alluded to that in my recor- in my letter to you.
Well, and I, I did read those and the examples and understand that there was a Queen Victoria or somebody preferred that method of toilet to the sanitary, uh, sewage. But Steve, as a matter of public policy, it's not something I'm gonna recommend or ask the council to pursue. We are, we are going to, as a community, we're gonna try and handle our sanitary sewage through a collection system and a traditional treatment method.
Well, Mayor Fraser, let, let me say something, um. It, it, I, I suggested in that letter, uh, or I just relayed information, I, I've done a lot of research on this. And, and, uh, we, sewer, wet sewer is a standard technology, not because it's the best way to handle sewage, but because it employed a lot of displaced peasants who had moved into London, England to begin with, and then other European cities. Public Works was a way to engage all these vagrants who had migrated from the country to the cities of Europe. And, and London, from what I know of that, London set the model for the, that the rest of the world had followed since then, London, England. But any, anybody who has ever worked with crops and, and knows the need for fertilizers would have said at that time and would say, could say today, it does not make sense to ruin fertilizer. And at the same time, expose it to the air so that people who live near the landfill have to smell it. And, and, and I, I'm saying that, that you should consider dry manag- I think anybody, I think Mr. Willard would agree. If, if his paycheck didn't depend on the wet system, he would, he would probably agree that, that dry management of septic waste is far superior. But we have a whole army, international army of sanitation workers who depend on their paychecks on the existing wet management technology. And, 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 and if, and if, if you, you know, if, I, 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 I mean, I ask you, I will, I, I will send you, you more, I put, I put a lot of information on, in your hands already, at least an inch, an inch of eight and a half by eleven paperwork. And, and, uh, I ask you to look at it seriously. And, and I, what I'm gonna ask you to do, Mayor Fraser, is to just up there where you live, do an experiment. I was, you remember, you remember Doug Cox, the scout master here in Georgetown, at, at Group One Seventy Seven at the Christian church? We, when we went to Count McKeever, what did we do? We dug a trench and we filled, we, we put the, the, the excreta in the trench. And that was per the boy scout Daniel.
And Steve, I, I've given you my opinion. I don't even have a vote on this issue. If there's any council member that, that, that wants to make a motion that, that we follow this method of handling sewage, I, I'll be glad to accept that. I'm not gonna recommend the policy, but if some council member wants to, I'll be glad to hear from you.
Well, I, Matt, I, I'll say that I, I delivered, I, I think I delivered, uh, back in September, a, a, an envelope, an eight, a big manila envelope, at least three quarters of not thicker of paperwork to each of you. I put it on your door across the bolling house, you get it? It's like the old bolling house, you're, you're, I mean, you're placing business. So, I mean, I, I would ask you to, to, you, you, I mean, we, we've got people complaining about the odor at the landfill. They've been complaining about it for years. And we got people out here at the trailer park who, who, who say, well, we may have to move because we can't manage sewage. And, and, and all that, to, to solve the problem at the trailer park, all it takes is a bucket and a shovel for, for, preferably, hopefully, for every resident, including children. So that they learn from, from their, or, you know, from childhood, how to manage septic waste or, 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 or excreta in, uh, ineffensively and, and, and what's more important, productively. Because it, it, you can manage it so that you, you, once you, once you bury it or once you process it into fertilizer, it, it's, it, it would be very, uh, unwise to, to not use it to, for, for, for crops. And so, it would not only solve the, 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 the trailer park problem, the landfill problem, but maybe more important, it would incentivize, could incentivize the entire, it could incentivize each of you and the entire population of Georgetown to Scott County to become horticulturists because of the fertilizer that it would generate. At home, no transport needed.
Mayor, council never made a motion for this issue. There was no motion made.
So, sorry, what was that?
I said, we, the council as a whole, everybody sitting here is not in favor of this issue. I could not see every yard, house in this community burying their own sewage behind their house. I couldn't see that.
You wouldn't see it?
I, I, I.
And I'll tell you what.
I'm not saying, I know I wouldn't see it, but I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't do it.
But, so, uh, uh, maybe you're ill-informed attorney, I mean, uh, 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 councilman, uh, uh. Maybe you, maybe you, maybe there's some information.
I read everything you gave me, every piece of paper I've got, I read every bit of it.
Well, let me quote a letter from you, to you, that I've got in my house from, from, uh, William Carter, that you're code enforcement officer. I, I asked him, and, and he, and quoted him in this letter, that when you visited my house, uh, Code Officer, uh, Carter, did you see any evidence of septic waste? And his answer was no. But I, I, I was, I buried it at my house.
I know you did. And I don't know how in the world a code enforcement agent stopped it personally.
He did, he found no, eh, he told me he found no evidence of it.
Steve, this, this is not a, a, a good time for this to be a debate, but if we wanna continue the conversation offline after council meeting, I think that'd be appropriate.
What do you mean offline?
I mean, uh, let us get on with our agenda, 'cause we're not gonna solve this issue right now.
Offline, what's that mean? Off, off of the television, you mean, or?
No, just at another time and not in this meeting.
Well, I, 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 I'll sit down, I'll turn this on for what you want me to do, but I'm gonna, before I do, I'm gonna tell you, when I grew up in this town, this was a farming town. Unfortunately, US government had dumped their tobacco program on our town. But I own land on Rucker Avenue where tobacco was raised when I was a kid. And we should have then gone around the US, uh, tobacco program and insisted on raising food crops. Every person in Scott County should be and could be raising food, fiber, and timber. But no, because Martha Lane Collins wanted Toyota here. And so, our, our mentality is supposed to be preoccupied by more automotive manufacturers. And I say to you, that what, that this fertilizer issue, the landfill issue could make the population of Georgetown farmers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, under Mayor's comments, uh, fairly brief. Just, uh, wanna give, uh, uh, Public Works, police, fire, dispatch, everybody, uh, a big round of applause for what they did on this now situation. Uh, this was a real tricky event, the way it turned to ice first and, uh, but they did it well. By Friday afternoon, they had all of the garbage picked up, all the snow was gone, it was gone. And Friday afternoon, they got all of their vehicles washed, they got all the salt off of them and even got the garbage trucks in and washing. So, that new wash bay that council made an investment in is beginning to pay off. When we can cleanse vehicles, get salt off of the end carriage, uh,
Yep.
makes a, a list, uh, rest. And so, I thought they did a real good job. Uh, for, uh, anyone that's interested, uh, the next Chamber luncheon will be the Save the City Press. We'd be glad to have you if you'd like to be there. I think that's February the twelfth.
Yeah, two days before Valentine's. Yeah.
Well, you all will really be proud of me that way.
Thank you.
Also, just, just to also mention that, uh, I thought the community had a really outstanding set of Martin Luther King Jr. Day activities.
They did.
The, the breakfast they canceled the night before because of inclement weather. Uh, but what they, uh, what they're trying to arrange is, uh, another breakfast during Black History Month.
Oh, good.
For the same celebration. So, we still have our tickets and we'll see if it gets rescheduled or not.
Good.
So, I think all that went, went very well. Uh, and then, uh, the other thing I want to make you aware of is, uh, Mr. Kyle Goodwin, our city engineer, is going to leave the employment of the city of Georgetown. His first day of work will be February the twelfth. I want y'all to feel really sad for Kyle, he was accepted a job in Naples, Florida.
My feelings.
You'll, you'll freeze down there sometime here.
Nice place.
I guess congratulations, but not all congratulations.
Moving to warmer weather, yeah.
Yeah.
We are, uh, the thing that I've asked Kyle to focus on in his last few days with us. He's been working on a, a transition document for us. So, we, we've, we've advertised a position and we're getting applications. We're hopeful that we can continue with a PE on our staff. We'll try that avenue first. And, and Megan's already working on that. Kyle is working on a transition manual so we know where we are on each of the projects. We probably won't have much overlap, if any overlap, between engineers, so.
When's your last, his last day?
Well, he starts down there on February the twelfth. At some point, he wants to move.
Well, this is your last council meeting.
Yeah, uh, now, later in the meeting, Kyle's gonna help us with the discussion of our streetlight issue and what we've learned and what that process has to be. But I did wanna let you all know that, uh, that, uh, Mr. Goodwin is leaving our employ. So, we, we can.
Warmer weather.
W- warmer weather and, uh, uh, I just, uh, couldn't be happier for Kyle. And, uh, if he can help us wrap up well and give us as solid a transition as we can, then we can wish him well and.
Thank you. Good.
Yes, sir. Um, let's see, Bob, you have, uh, three or four different things you like to purchase. You're spending serious money coming back.
Big money.
Evening. Uh, the first I might have is approve a purchase order in the amount of seventeen thousand five hundred dollars for professional services to Horizon Inspection LLC to provide inspection services for the Lancaster tank sandblasting and painting. And we do have a line item in our budget for that project. These are specialized inspection services that have to do with climbing the tower and going inside the bow and I'm not doing that, so.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Yeah, no questions provided. On the paper, say aye.
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 Next is approval of the low bid amount of two hundred ninety-eight thousand six hundred dollars to utility service company for the Lancaster tank repainting project. And our budget had a line item in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars for this, so it came in about two hundred thousand dollars in the.
Motion's been made and seconded. On the paper, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And we, uh, I think we moved, we did our radio equipment, moved off to the side, Bob.
I know Sean has been discussing with the people, but I don't, I'll check on that, see if it's been done yet.
We're just working to make sure our antennas don't get in the way of their painting project, since they're all up there together. And, uh, let's see, we also, uh, we, we included, uh, this bid amount includes some design on the tank, isn't it?
Yeah, for the lo- uh, the logo.
Yeah, we're, we're, I think we've given them two or three looks of, of a logo on the tank. But it won't just be a plain white tank, it's gonna be.
No, no.
It will carry a logo, a little bit of that.
It has a city logo on it. It has a city logo on it now, so we'll go back with, I guess, wherever you all pick.
I think we sent you, uh-
We gave you, I think we gave you specs or representations of a couple, and we just, we just decided. It was included in your bid, so-
Right, yeah, it's in the bid to put a logo up there, yeah. We just need to tell the painter which one we're going with.
Bob, I apologize, which one's Lancaster tank?
Right down here on four sixty, that Payne's Depot Road.
Bob, at one time, I know, I had mentioned to council, and I, I can't remember if you were here or not, you might have been, but trying to get some lights on the tower that's out by the interstate, and trying to, you know, make that kind of a landmark from when people are driving up and down the interstate.
Yeah, we did look into that, uh, but because that's a petasphere tank-
Yeah.
And there's no railings, it'd be about thirty thousand dollars, because you'd have to go off with the strut and come back up.
Can't do it from the ground?
No, too tall.
Not with a spotlight.
Last time, Bob, walk around.
You went to visit up in-
Where's that telephone?
Natty, I think we need to engage there, sir.
Our cell train. Our cell train. We have big time there.
Let's see, do we go down Payne's Water Tank?
Okay, next, and this is a, this is a big day for the water companies. Approve of a low bid amount of a million, six hundred seventy-five thousand dollars to Jave LLC for Phase One of the Collection Distribution Center to be located at ten ten West Main Street. Estimated construction time is two hundred forty days. Our budget contains a line item in the amount of eight hundred thousand for year one of this project, and we'll put year two in the next year's budget. And we're gonna pay for this project fifty-fifty from cash in our existing line of credit, just like we did with our office building.
Motion, Mayor.
Any questions for Bob? And this is the, the lot that they purchased.
The lot across hillside.
Across hillside, that's now been cleared.
It's been cleared.
Part of our centralization.
Is there any sidewalks going in there?
Yeah.
There you go.
Yeah, there's your big sidewalks.
There's a piece of sidewalk.
One piece at a time.
That was the right-
One bag, one bag of Quick-Crete at a time.
We'll have wheelbarrows and hoes for all the lots of people to come.
There you go. Just give me a hard hat, just, you know, I'll do it.
On the paper, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And last item does require a vote, it's an FYI to the council. We've brought this report to the council from time to time over the last twenty years, and this is the best it's ever looked. Georgetown Water is now the lowest for water and sewer in whatever category you want to look at in the seventeen counties in the Bluegrass ad area. And, uh, we've grown to be the number two water provider and the number two sewer provider in that same area.
Very impressive.
Way to go. Good job. Good job.
And, uh, who would've ever thought that a rate book would be interesting reading? You, you actually can find some interesting data in that, in that rate book. I think it's, it's important when, when Bob brings us information like this to, to, to really understand, uh, some of it. We, we benefited from excellent management, I think both from, from senior management of GMWSS and its board. They've done it, they, so it's been well managed. Uh, we're in a community that is growing. And you never can underestimate the benefit of having a partner, i.e. county government, give you ten million dollars of capital improvements, and not ask for a return on them. So, the county putting ten million dollars into our water distribution system, and the extent that that expanded our rate base has been a lot of what has been able to keep these rates this low. This is very not normal, uh, that, that we would experience a growth of this magnitude in a partner to make a capital investment of that size. But, but I say all that ju- just, just to indicate that it's not realistic to think that we can go without rate increases forever. And I just, it, it begs saying that, Bob.
Now, don't, don't listen too much about that.
I mean, we have these hundred books.
He's right, though.
Amen, Marvin.
Just saying, a lot of things have helped us get here, and we are in a very enviable position. But there will be a point when capital needs dictate our rates.
Right, that's-
And that's just the reality of the industry.
Just the, that's gonna be the driving factor, capital needs.
So, it just bears a little balance with everything that you present. Uh, any other questions for Bob?
Yeah, can I mention one thing, though, along the work, the water tanks? I was traveling to Western Kentucky, and I saw a water tank, and it had the Western Kentucky Hilltoppers.
Yeah.
A logo on it.
I've seen that.
And it made me, you know, I wondered if it was a private, you know, tank, or if it was public, or, but, you know, I didn't know if there was any kind of relationship that, you know, we could stick somebody's logo on our tank, and I'll save that thirty thousand dollars if that thing lit up.
You actually can't.
Oh, really?
Nice and simple.
You can't?
Do you do sponsorship?
Florence Mall.
Florence, Florence Mall. You know, I've heard of Florence Mall.
I've seen horses on the water tank.
No one's heard of Florence? Yeah, well, it used to say, it used to say Florence Mall.
Yeah.
It says y'all.
And somebody basically sued, said, "You can't do that."
Yeah.
So, instead of changing the whole painting, he just took it out, said, "Yeah," and changed it to a Y. And it cost a big amount of money.
Y'all.
It's all that is it. Just get the light up.
I'll get you an LED flashlight, then.
A rotating light. Empire State Building, had different colors for times of the year.
Uh, let's see.
May I just say one word? I'm not, I'm not, I can't, I can't have to say like ten, ten words?
Yes.
In response to the issue raised here by Mr. White, I am very proud to say that since nineteen eighty-two, I have gotten all my water off of my roof whenever I happen to be living. I don't buy water from the city, I don't need water from the city, and I don't think anybody needs water from the city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Under item A on the agenda, it's a series of second readings of issues that we've talked about. Item A, the second reading of an annexation ordinance for one sixty-seven Industry Road, and I think-
Y'all gotta take a walk.
Texas could use itself.
Take a walk.
You're on more time. One more time.
So, for the record, good reflection, rather, as you use yourself.
An ordinance annexing into the city of Georgetown certain real property containing eight point six six acres located at one sixty-seven Industry Road in Scott County, Kentucky. Summary, annexes into Georgetown city limits by written signature of the property owner's importance with KRS eighty-one A four twelve, eight point six six acres of property onlooked located at one sixty-seven Industry Road in Scott County, Kentucky. Provides for an effective date upon passage and publication. Publicly introduced and read the first time January eighth, twenty eighteen. Publicly read the second time January twenty-second, twenty eighteen.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion's been made.
Second.
And second. And if there are no questions, then we call her up.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mrs. Tingle Sames?
Yes.
Mr. Lesby?
Yes.
Mrs. Singer Erdley?
Yes.
Mrs. Bishop Cromway?
Yes.
Mr. Bradley?
Thank you. Accession ordinance passes. Uh, item D is second reading of zoning, oh, we can get it.
Hey, Kyle, can you get it?
Just a minute. Uh, we have second reading of zoning ordinance for one ten East Showalter.
An ordinance changing the zoning classification of certain real property containing three point zero one four acres located at one ten East Showalter Drive in Georgetown, Scott County, Kentucky, from I one to B two. Summary, amends the official Georgetown Scott County zoning map to show a change in the zoning classification for certain real property consisting of a total of three point zero one four acres located at ten, located at one ten East Showalter Road in the city of Georgetown, Scott County, Kentucky, from light industrial to highway commercial. Provides for several built-y, repeal of inconsistent ordinances, and an effective date upon passage and publication. The text of the ordinance is available for examination in Georgetown's City Clerk's Office, one hundred North Court Street, Georgetown, Kentucky, four oh three two four. Introduced and publicly read the first time January eighth, twenty eighteen. Publicly read the second time January twenty-second, twenty eighteen.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion's been made and seconded. And if there are no questions, we'll call her up.
Mr. Bradley?
Yes.
Mrs. Bishop Cromway?
Yes.
Mrs. Singer Erdley?
Yes.
Mr. Lesby?
Yes.
Mrs. Tingle Sames?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, ordinance passes. Uh, item C, second reading of the Smith Cox Annexation Ordinance Correction.
An ordinance amending ordinance fifteen dash zero one one to correct the map and legal description of property annexed into the city of Georgetown. Summary, one, corrects the map and legal description of property annexed into the city by ordinance fifteen dash zero one one. Two, provides for an effective date upon passage of publication. Publicly introduced and read the first time January eighth, twenty eighteen. Publicly read second time, January twenty-second, twenty eighteen.
Motion. Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded. And if there are no questions, we'll call her up.
Mr. Lesby?
Yeah.
Mrs. Singer Erdley?
Yes.
Mrs. Bishop Cromway?
Yes.
Mr. Bradley?
Yes.
Mrs. Tingle Sames?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you. And item D is the second reading of the Code Enforcement Amendment Ordinance that we have discussed previously, where we had some, uh, fines that were just stacking up too quickly, and we wanted to reduce that fines. I think that's a major change.
No, there's, yeah, there's quite a few, part of the ministry of cleanup stuff, but that's the most significant change. There's a lot of important stuff there, but that's the most readily identifiable. I don't, I, I apologize, we just forgot about it in the first.
An ordinance amending ordinance sixteen dash zero zero nine and making various related revisions. Summary, amends ordinance twenty sixteen dash zero zero one to make various changes necessary to make ordinance consistent with recent changes to the state law. To clarify that the code enforcement officer has discretion to require a shorter or longer period of remediation as warranted. To make the default remediation period seven days. To clarify that a hundred dollar admin fee is added to every violation requiring abatement by the city. To limit the city attorney's discretion to reduce or waive penalties to situations involving error by the city, insolvency of the violator, or good cause for failure to remedy the violation, or if the penalties exceed the value of the property. To provide examples of good cause. To clarify that the hearing officer or board has the authority to increase or decrease penalties based on the totality of the circumstances in the case. To amend the penalty structure to provide for three classes of violations with separate penalty structures. To change the trigger for when a violator receives a courtesy notice of violation from the first offense within a twenty-four month period to the first offense within the same calendar year. And amends various sections of the code of ordinances to specify whether the violations are class one, two, or three for purposes of determining penalties. Make violation of the noise ordinance a criminal penalty rather than a civil penalty, subject to enforcement through the code enforcement board. Provides that a violation existing on multiple vacant lots of common ownership in a platted subdivision shall be considered one violation. Provides for several built-y, repeal of inconsistent ordinances, and an effective date upon passage and publication. The full text of this ordinance is available for examination in the City Clerk's Office, one hundred North Court Street, Georgetown, Kentucky, four oh three two four. Introduced and publicly read the for the first time December eleventh, twenty seventeen. Publicly read the second time, January twenty-second, twenty eighteen.
Motion, Mayor.
Thank you. Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mrs. Tingle Sames?
No.
Mr. Lesby?
Yes.
Mrs. Singer Erdley?
Yes.
Mrs. Bishop Cromway?
Yes.
Mr. Bradley?
Yes. Thank you. Item nine on your agenda, uh, and I'm sorry, Mark's not gonna be here tonight, but we probably won't take action on this tonight, but, council has, for some time, expressed concern about the streetlights, and we've tried to take those concerns pretty seriously. We had, uh, we know about West Main Street, uh, Mark has talked to us about going out there. And Kyle, you spent a night with, uh-
Nick Modle.
My son, Modle, and you all added to the list. And Kyle's been, been working on that list, uh, and we wanted to, to bring what we have found so far back to the council to, for a little discussion and get some direction from it. We, we've been meeting with Kentucky utility engineers, trying to figure out how we move this forward, to get some of these place, places, uh, with better lighting. Keeping in mind that, that most of the places where councils ask us to, to consider us helping with this lighting are on areas that are on the state road, even though they're within the city limits, and we'd like to see better lighting, even though it's a state highway. And, uh, not our direct financial responsibility, but we're concerned about public safety. In working with KU's engineers, we've, we've learned that this will be a fairly substantial project. Everything is. It's not so simple as just saying, "Well, we want twenty more streetlights, KU go put those up." Here's a letter authorizing them. Apparently, each of those lighting locations has to be engineered. They don't have a specific location for any of these light bulbs. They have to engineer each separate location for the found conditions in that location. So, they can't even give us a one price fits all, we can engineer X amount for so much money. We do think that, that when we total these, uh, as many as forty lights in the various locations, if we engineer all of these lights and install all these lights at our expense, we're looking at, at a total cost between engineering and construction between six hundred and seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Wow.
It's wild.
This is not just an easy thing to do.
That's wild, I would not-
Uh, we think that the engineering costs for all of this exceed a hundred thousand dollars. Now, we kicked this around internally today in a staff meeting for about an hour. What does it mean? How do we react to it? What do we recommend to council with this information? Because we didn't want to dispounder with this information, we wanted to be able to talk with you all about the path forward. I asked Kyle specifically to come tonight, not just to embarrass him about leaving and taking a new job, but I want Kyle to help us talk through this and what the engineering requirements are. It, it could be that as we evaluate this, uh, some of the, we will have some construction expense, and we will have a monthly care expense, you know, with the streetlights monthly. But we're gonna have significant installation cost as well. We, Kyle currently has ten thousand dollars in his budget for services of this type. We were gonna come, it was our intention to, to share this information with council, let you have some discussion with Kyle, and then get some feedback on where we take our first stab at engineering a handful of lights and getting them in, just with the money we have budgeted, and, or you all may want to add funds to the ten thousand dollar budget. Let us go through an engineering process, and then be in a better position to address a bigger number of lights with our new budget cycle. But at least get a pilot project of a handful of lights underway at one of our most sensitive locations. Kyle, did I butcher that too badly? If you'd come up with it.
No, I think that was well said, Mayor. Um, if you recall, the, the re-
Um, if you recall, the, the reason why we need to have a engineering consultant in the first place is these are within the state right of way. And the state won't permit lights or anything to be put in unless they have a plan that they can approve so that whatever gets put in meets their requirements. In order for us to do that, we had to try and hire an electrical consultant who's certified with the state, who knows their regulations and will help us meet them. Typically in the past, uh, well, at least with city streets, when a new development comes along, um, we have our ordinance which states the normal spacing and I will work with KU to, I will help them locate those lights and then they will go out and install them when it's time. And in that case, we use money that's given to us by the developer when, uh, the plaque gets signed. Uh, in this case, I can't say put this light here because I don't know if it meets the state requirements. So, and I'm not certified with the state as an electrical engineer. Um, so that, that's the, the impetus for why we needed to, to hire an electrical engineer. We did the RFQ and we selected, um, a company, a GRW. Uh, we met with them last week and now we're getting to the type of costs that we're looking at and it's, it's significant. So the idea was start small and see, you know, pick one of the highest priority areas, um, go through the engineering design, see what it takes for the state. See what we can do on a minimalist type, type basis on what the state would approve and, um, go from there.
Is West Main Street one of those areas?
Yeah.
Lighting would help a lot. Could that be the first one that we do?
If, whatever council directs us to do will be the first one that we do.
The other one's Paris Pike, right?
Mm-hmm.
And we've got a couple of s- of high volume intersections that, that need lighting now.
Yeah, yeah.
But we did talk about West Main Street today. Uh, we, we know there that there's a, there are probably some tree, some tree trimming issues.
There are.
Yeah, there are. It's dark.
And where lights can be placed. Uh, but we, we, we wanted to go down this path as well as we could 'cause councils asked for it and when, when we, when we learned how much engineering was involved, we stopped our consulting electrical engineer and said, let us talk to the council party. We don't wanna spend money that's not in the direction the council really wants us to go. And given that we were limited in this year's budget with what we can do, we can get started. And we thought that might be a good way to, to go.
Did they, did they make any suggestions on places to, from what they've seen, from places to start, that they think the impact can be benefited the best or not?
No, the, they just did a cursory review. I mean, since they're not under contract, you know, they're not gonna outweigh a whole lot of time, but they've done a cursory review and, and, you know, brought us some site maps, um, to try and get the discussion started. But, um, it, it really comes down to what we as a city think is the most dangerous area that we can look at first, at least from my mind.
How much, how much does each individual light cost?
Well, that's what I was getting ready to say. It's worth noting procedurally why we're, why we're coming to, to talk to you all and it's because, um, we issued an RFQ, which is where we score them based on qualifications and then we sit down and negotiate a cost with them. And, and what they said was, we can't give you a cost per light. We can't give you a unit cost or a cost of the whole project because there's so much work involved in, e- e- every little intersection is different. Every, you know, this one may have more problems than another, so that's another reason to start small is to learn what's involved. They could give us a cost for the whole thing, but they would have to go to lots and lots and lots of work to make that happen first and it's, it's somewhat of a fairness issue to them to say, how much work do you have to put in before you sign a contract with us? Especially when our current budget's ten thousand dollars. Especially when our current budget is only ten thousand.
Yeah, we divide six hundred thousand by forty, it's a lot more than ten thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's probably, to be honest, it'd probably cost more, thinking of the two main areas of which I, it'd probably cost more to put lights in up, up here than it will out there because it's more wide open there and there's not as much in the way and up here you've got, it's tighter, which might be things more in the way.
Sorry for what I said.
It's a sidewalk.
You know, we're the staff.
Yeah, we don't wear that.
We might get a grant for some of that, right?
Yeah, we might. Might get a grant, so that money right there.
In fact, lighting.
Yeah.
In the second and third phases, lighting should be a part of that.
Lighting, lighting is currently included.
That's a good point.
I think our, our recommendation is, we've heard you all say kind of what, what the hotspots are. Let us work with them and, and like you suggested, let them say, here's what we think the best thing for your ten thousand dollars is.
Yeah, because it's not a lot of money.
Yeah, and, and go from there.
What was the two intersections? I forgot that we talked about that needed lighting. You said there was two intersections.
They were Crumball.
Okay.
Out on Paris.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Well, I didn't know, the mayor said about two intersections.
You've mentioned a couple of, of high volume intersections, I think.
Yeah, believe it or not, four sixty in the bypass is four. Underlighted, yeah.
Yeah.
Two, two state roads. Yeah. Yeah.
Two state roads, that's cities make out.
Yeah.
Connie?
Part of Bleeden.
It is very, very dark as you're going toward, toward, um, when you pass Kane Wood.
Yeah.
'Cause I was riding with Jason when he was shut in the snow and it is extremely dark from probably Ward Hall to the Chevron and Marathon Station out there. It's just pitch dark.
That's such a heavily traveled area. All of Washington D.C.
Just to be, just to be.
I'm gonna do my school, you know, going up that way too.
Just to be a little more clear, the way that we approach this from, from all the input from, from you all is, is intersections. If we did a stretch of road, this would be much more expensive.
Yeah, yeah.
So we're looking at an intersection by intersection basis. So, for example, that stretch of road would not be lighted in this case. It would be the, you know, the major intersections.
But the bypass up there by it could.
Correct.
The bypass up there where Western Elementary is could be lighted, which will help.
Another one to identify.
Yeah.
I think we're right, Mayor. Just let them pick out what they think's best feasible. The more we get more bang out of it, plus without.
A triage.
Yeah.
Yeah, a good triage.
And, and get, get, uh,
A triage.
The hope is not only to get some light in a few places, but to get an understanding of the process.
Yeah. Good idea.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
But it, it is, it seems like it ought to be a state expense and we're just trying to help our citizens.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know, I mean, like I said, I know you were talking about, but I don't think ten thousand's gonna get us very far. I'd like to run up the ante a little bit to, to make an impact.
Yes.
In fact, David, when, when we were talking about this earlier today, we were operating under an assumption that that was a twenty thousand dollar amount.
Yeah.
I only learned right from council meeting that it was ten, so twenty's probably a more reasonable number if we want to make, if we wanna understand what we're doing and make an impact. Twenty thousand is probably a much more realistic number.
Well, well, and additionally, um, we'll be working with KU on the installation. So, you know, the fixtures, we won't be paying for. It'll be a monthly tariff. It's just the actual putting the conduit down is what we'd be paying for. So it'll help us on the construction side. Some of that higher estimate that the consultant kind of threw out there, they were estimating it based on a contractor and us buying the lights themselves.
Just real blunt, can, can we do what we need to do with ten thousand dollars or would we be better served to ask the council to approve a expenditure of up to twenty thousand dollars?
Certainly.
Knowing that that additional ten thousand will have to be a part of us, a future budget, whether, or a transfer between lineups.
Yeah, I mean, however, we need to do it and if, we need to wait until we get some actual numbers back. It might be twenty-five thousand.
We'll come back to you as an MO.
Yeah, we really need the numbers here.
Come back with what, what an MO.
We'll come back to the MO next time, but we need to know, what, like Kyle said, the, the idea is to set a cap on it. There's not gonna be necessarily a set scope. It's, the scope's set in the RFQ. Right. But let's decide, you all decide sort of informally how much he wants to bring you back in an MO next February, this February first meeting. And we'll come back with that.
Do you think we can make a better showing at twenty?
Oh, yeah. I, I don't think too far, yeah.
No, I think, yeah.
Stretch it twice as much.
Yeah.
Are you all, would, would you all be comfortable if we brought that project back in the twenty thousand dollar range? I think that's, uh, operating instructions.
Twenty and then he has plans to be thirty or ten and.
No, no, up to twenty.
Sort of makes your eye.
Do you want to, Mr. Motion Mayor, to, to?
But, but no, we need to get an actual price though. Isn't that what we need to do?
Yeah, that's what we're asking you formally.
This is informally and, and I think we're gonna give Kyle the latitude to, to bring back an MO.
That's how the RFQ works is we negotiate with them and we have, since we essentially hired them, we can say, here's your budget. Tell us what you can do for us within that.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
And, and I know ki- we kind of briefly touched on this, um, during our conversation earlier, but I think what we'd like to do is a master agreement and then that MO would approve, you know, a sub-agreement for a specific number of projects. That way we can retain them for, in the future, for other parts of the project if needed. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Without having to go through this whole selection process.
Without having to go through the selection process. But any future increases would be brought to you in forms of MO.
Yes.
Okay, that's all we'll do back there. Do you have questions for Kyle? This is your big change.
Mayor, I, I really do, I wish that I, I couldn't go to that, that meeting, but, you know, the, the, talking about these LED lights, would that be an option that we'll have? 'Cause I'm seeing some more modern, contemporary looking LED lights that put out pretty good glow.
That's gonna be good.
It could certainly be an option. I know KU now has them in their tariff structure, except they're extremely high because they haven't been out in the market for a while and they haven't brought their cost down.
Yeah.
Uh, I would, I would probably not recommend adopting them right now, but maybe in the future as a, uh, if we wanted to own the lights and maintain the lights ourselves, absolutely. But that's, that's not what we're currently doing with most of our lights.
I thi- I think, David, that, that there should be a point in this decision process. Counsel can work at either time. KU had lots of talk about owning the lights and simply paying on electric as opposed to KU paying the lights and nothing that's here.
Yeah.
A lot of the, now, I'm not a bet if we work at complete cost of ownership at the time. The KU now might even be more expensive, but it costs us a lot of energy chemicals.
Right. Yeah. Well, and the manpower to go and maintain all these.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we're not really maintaining any lights at this point. All of them, all of our lights. The decorative ones downtown are ours. Sure.
Yeah.
We have lots of lights with the green ones now.
Yeah.
Actually, I did have a question. The subdivision thing that we brought up last, or the, the email that we all got about page crossing, has that been, what's going on with that? Has that been fixed or?
We're still waiting to hear back.
You're still waiting to hear back? Okay, okay, so that's kind of where that goes.
Well, we'll touch bases in a minute.
Okay.
Anything else, Scott?
I don't have anything else, except it's been a pleasure being your city engineer and wish you all the best.
We wish you the best.
We wish you the best too. Hope you don't get sunburned.
If you do, you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Kyle. Item ten on your agenda, we've asked Stacy to stay late tonight to present you all with the quarterly financial report.
I can see you all at least every once in a while.
We didn't know where you were.
So quiet.
Hard work.
They got a problem.
You know, the.
Mayor?
All right, you guys, Stacy, do you get other stuff, babe?
Is this, I guess it's four. Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Good evening. So here is our quarterly revenue update and as always, your expense report is attached for the quarter. And I know we've got a lot of things going on, so hopefully in February we'll be bringing a mid-year budget amendment once we've had a chance to see where all of our revenues have come in for the first six months. A lot of those returns don't come in till January thirty-first, so we're still waiting on some of that information. Um, but obviously we can address some of these issues, hopefully such as streetlights and other things we've had going on during that time. So I'm just gonna walk you through our five major revenue categories that we talk about every quarter. So first you will see payroll tax collections and you will see, this one just goes through November. Um, earlier in January, we received receipts, uh, for December that were collected in December for November. So this one always runs a little behind the others due to the timing of collections and remittals. And you can see that we are forty-four percent, uh, collected on our budget. And if you look at those year-to-date comparisons, kind of under the chart, we are ahead of last year at this point by four hundred seventy-eight thousand. So, uh, we are running good with our payroll taxes. And as always, I've included the monthly incentive payments at the bottom so you can see what revenue, um, you can compare it to prior years with that. Any questions on payroll taxes? So the next one is net profit. Um, this is our account that can wildly fluctuate depending on what's going on with each of our taxpayers. Uh, you will see that we are running behind from where we have in past years. Um, we will get a lot of returns in the April and May timeframe. Obviously, that's when everybody will be filing their December thirty-first tax returns. And based on prior years, um, our other taxpayer pool, I like to call it, has been bringing in about two point four million. Um, right now we're kind of anticipating this to maybe go up another million or so. So we will definitely be looking at this account during our mid-year budget amendment, talking to the revenue commission, seeing what's going on so that we can get a, a better handle on it because the other thing that happens, um, you will see that June of last year was adjusted from the last time you saw it during the audit. There's always taxpayers that have credit balances at the end of the year and because we're on an accrual basis, our auditors make us deduct those refunds from our revenue for the year. Essentially, it pushes it to the next year and if the credits get used up the next year, then you're good. But sometimes those credits can roll over for several years and, um, so as of two thousand eighteen, we, we don't know exactly what our credits will be at June thirty-eighteen, but they could be substantial. June thirty-seventeen, they were about nine hundred thousand. So we're keeping an eye on this one and hopefully at the next quarter, we'll have a little more information. Of course, it'll be April. Like I said before, we know the real picture once we get all the final returns in. Insurance premium taxes, um, we've basically received the July to September quarter that we will, are starting to get the October to December quarter receipts in. But you can see compared to the first quarter of last year, we are about thirty-four thousand dolla- thirty-four thousand ahead. We're at about twenty-seven percent of our budget. So we're on track to be about the same as last year with our collections. So we should, as, as far as everything stays true, we should be able to hit our budget there. Property tax collections, obviously we've had our big month for that in December. So you can see we're at ninety-four percent of our budget. Currently, we're eighty-one thousand ahead of where we were at this time last year. So our property tax budget is doing good.
City clerk works real hard, isn't she?
Yes. Yes, she does. And last but not least, our alcoholic beverage regulatory fees. You can see, um, we finally have a full picture for the first quarter and it was about thirty-eight thousand ahead of last year. And then obviously the October to December quarter, those will still trail in at the end of January, so. Any questions on any of the revenues?
Stacy, back on page one, where you're looking at the payroll and obviously those numbers for the past years have been, you know, somewhat consistent, certainly more so than the, uh,
Yes.
Yeah. So if we're four hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars ahead of where we were last year and last year we did make five hundred thousand, are they gonna put us on course to do maybe a million dollars more than budgeted?
It could. I mean, depending on how the rest of the year plays out, it depends on whether, um, our employers are working overtime or not. We don't know. Those can, that can change throughout the year. Um, I mean, obviously if it stays on track as it is right. Um, I mean, obviously, if it stays on track as it is right now, yes, we could be looking at potentially twelve million dollars in revenue.
Thankfully, that one does have consistency too, because one net profits is. And particularly with that profits, we. The information is so dated once we receive it that it just makes the budgeting a lot more difficult. The city and the county and Revenue Commission are are trying to do deep dive right now into what net profits looks like. And to see if we can understand it any better. The problem is, we can look at all kinds of trend information, but net profits doesn't follow the trend.
No.
No, it doesn't.
It's just completely spiky.
Yeah.
Whatever happens.
And you you can you can do trend analysis all day long, but it tells you nothing.
Until you have a recession, then it's real easy.
Where did it go?
It's really easy.
Well, and in fact, what what it looks like is uh, we, I'll I'll chuckle about it since nobody else did. When we look at uh the first page, payroll tax collections, do you see this year's number on the graph? We we should draw that line further down here somewhere. It's just, it's just the way the graph appears spiky. And then and then there have been years when when uh one of our large employers has a credit.
We get a payback.
Yeah.
They can choose to roll that credit forward or they can ask us to write a check.
And they did.
And they had.
And we did.
And we did.
So, that 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 is a a revenue item that is probably our most vexing.
Yeah.
To keep up with and manage and predict.
Alright, thank you.
Any other questions for Stacy?
Good job.
Thank you. Uh, Chief Colson. We have a municipal order approving an application for an AFG grant.
Yes, sir.
What can you tell us about that?
Uh, for the AFG grant, uh, we're wanting to replace a a motorized rescue boat, new trailer, kind of new setup for us to replace a a boat that's about twenty-two years old, so. Gonna take the AFG route and try to try to do that. Approximately, the quote that we received was twenty-two thousand. Our match uh city portion would be two thousand.
Motion.
Motion's been made.
Seconded.
Seconded, thank you. Any questions for Chief Colson? I'm in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I also had the approval to accept the the fire commission.
I think a motion for approval, Mayor.
Second, Mayor.
Third, no.
I'm just ready to go home.
We've already spent the money, we need to prove it.
They need a check, I think.
Uh, have you got a a second, a motion or a second? Good. I'm in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Let's see, back to the agenda. Council comments. Uh, Chuck, if we want to start again.
Just wanted to give an observation after the snowstorm, I was driving around Lexington. Paying attention to our roads and our conditions and roads in Lexington and our roads look a lot better. I mean, there was neighborhoods there that hadn't been touched and there were solid sheets of ice. I think all of our roads got that's great and solid and cleared off. I think people need to realize how good we have been.
Uh, Chuck, we we also got some comments similar to that from folks that live in the smaller communities in Rose. So, it's just not a comparison of Lexington yet, but folks seem to be pretty appreciative of each other, Chuck. Thank you. Anything else? Kyle?
No, thanks.
Uh, there is a flag issue coming on Main Street on East Main that's that's ha- barely hanging on the post. The post gotten bent straight out. I just noticed when I came in. And then this morning, someone asked me about the speed limit on Main Street. Is there any possible way that we could lower it so that? They said there was an accident at the intersection out here this week or last week and asked, they talked about the speeding up and down on Main Street. That if it could be lowered to ten miles an hour. And I said, I don't know because it's a state highway. So. Yeah, it's twenty-five, isn't it?
Is it twenty-five?
Uh-huh.
It's twenty-five. Cause I noticed when I was driving it today, people fly down.
No, that's what they said. That's why I said it's twenty-five.
If if you're doing the speed limits, you wouldn't have an issue.
Yeah, you wouldn't have an issue.
Nobody's driving.
It wouldn't matter if you put ten mile an hour up there. People who speed, they're gonna speed.
No, on Main Street, on Main Street, mhm.
Getting strung and.
Yeah, if you hit the lights green, you can just fly.
They say it's four there. And what I take for um where I live on Broadway, right where the road merges.
Yes, yeah.
They drag race to see who's.
They do. They do. They'll cut you off.
They, and I all the time, I don't like hearing horn honking.
Yeah.
We're mad at each other because they won't give way.
So, you gotta ask yourself, if they're going that fast, do you think they're even looking for a speed limit sign? Probably not.
Well, if it wasn't for the sidewalk out here with the stripes, you have to really watch that.
You sure do.
That's the only thing that's slowing them down here.
It sure is.
But then you better watch, look twice when you cross there.
And interestingly, if you try to do the speed limit on these areas.
You're you're picking up pretty quick right there.
People will drive right up your rear box.
They sure do.
Yeah, yeah, that's true, they will. Alright, and then there's a couple of streetlights out on Paris Pike, talking about lights earlier. One of them's out actually in the stretch where we are. And then the light that goes right, you're going under the railroad track. That one's off all the time, but then the one that's up under the railroad track is on and then it's off, but then it's on, like it's on a sensor all the time.
It's a bad sound.
Yeah, on that one. And so, that one's even more crucial than the other one because it's right there at the railroad track with people walking under the railroad track. And then the last thing, I just wanna thank the council for, and the mayor and the city for all their support during Mom's death, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, broken arms is just too much.
Yeah, a little extra pressure.
You have a cash now too bad, do you?
No, I have a sling.
A sling.
Mhm, so I sling, so slints, whatever this thing is. So, I won't do what.
Something else might.
So, I won't do what I'm not supposed to do, but it hasn't stopped me too much, so.
Good, good. David?
Mayor, I was gonna see if we could have our public works guys clean underneath Paris Pike Bridge.
That always gets bad.
It does get bad.
Yeah, it gets so bad, oh wow.
Well, and when it's done, it's kicked out. It just bounces back and it just keeps.
I don't mind. If you want me to call Arlene, I can do it or.
I got it.
We're.
Mom.
We're. With this part of the meeting, we're we're trying to pay more attention about writing everything down and then exchanging emails to make sure that we've got action down on things the council's brought up. And then we're all supposed to talk about it right before our coming into council meeting, so we have answers for those things, so. Anything else, Dave?
No, sir.
My turn.
I just wanna say I like this. The the wall and the color and that it's nice and cleaned up.
It will give you a punch.
And uh and also, um, yeah, I really enjoyed the Martin Luther King Day, the festivities, and I had never done the march until this time. And uh and it was really cool to do and uh just a neat community thing and Andrew and.
Brisk.
Yeah, just brisk.
Just no risk.
Yeah, yeah, but it was it was really good, so. Good celebration.
Good.
I'm good.
There's nothing else to come for the council. I missed the other one.
Come on, do you give me that credit? I'm sorry, I just wanted to mention that. I I I feel bad. I I'm not. And to get that.
Well, and. And I'm all.
I mean, that's just a lot. I mean, Mark, Mark, you you did get the pictures. Especially if you get something like that.
Point. We got that edge of the street. That's a good point. That's a good point. Okay, where did you get that? Okay, okay, I mean.
It's because I see you, you're in four hours because you're at Johnson. There's people, people have to come off. Yeah, cause I see you're there.
I heard you said you had lunch with your son today.
He told me you did. He told me you did and uh.
Oh, Philip Johnson. Was there an elevator station?
Well, um, when you come in the back door, why do you call the desk?
The back door.
Well, your back door is different. Your back door.